Good evening and welcome to the Grand Prairie City Council Meeting for Monday, November 26th. Let's ask everyone to rise and join us in singing, "Oh, Canada."
(Singing) Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot God, in all thy sons of God. With all we parts we see thee rise, the true North strong and green. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on God for thee. God, he for God, glorious and green. Oh, Canada, we stand on God, oh, he. Oh, Canada, we stand on God, oh, he.
Thank you to the National Film Board for the images of our country and to our very own Grand Prairie Boys Choir for the audio. We move on to the adoption of the previous council meeting minutes. Thank you, Counselor Wong.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move that the minutes of the city council meeting held November 13th, 2012 be adopted.
Thanks very much, Counselor Wong. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Any errors or omissions from that set of minutes? Seeing none, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. And we move on to the adoption of the agenda. Counselor Crokin.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move council adopt the agenda as presented, but I have one addition. It's the appointments to boards and committees. I'd like to have that under 8.1, under reports.
Thanks very much, Counselor Crokin. So, one addition. So, motion for the agenda with that one addition. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. That brings us to the delegation portion of the agenda. This is an opportunity for anybody to come forward and address council on any community-related matter. We do welcome anybody to come. It's a standing part of our regular city council meeting. It doesn't look like we're going to have anybody coming forward tonight, but it would remind the public that they're always welcome and we have a standing spot for you if you choose to join us at a future council meeting. We have no public hearings tonight, no unfinished business, and so we go straight into reports in item 8.1. We look for, council has some recommendations for appointments to boards and committees for the, starting 2013. We'll start with the chairs of the committees if they could make the motions, and that would start with the 100th Anniversary Committee and Counselor Rice. Sure, go ahead there.
I would move that council appoint Ms. Terry Head, Ms. Janet Longmate, Mr. Randy Pike, Ms. Winona LaFrenier, and Ms. Dolly Morrison to the 100th Anniversary Committee for two-year terms, ending December 31st, 2014.
Okay. Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, then we'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. That brings us to Arts Development Committee. Counselor Monroe.
Thanks, Mayor Given. I'll move that council appoint Mr. Derek Bowen, or pardon me, I'll move that council approve the appointment of Mr. Derek Bowen to the Arts Development Committee for a three-year term, ending December 31st, 2015.
Thanks very much, Counselor Monroe. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. The Combative Sports Commission, Counselor O'Toole.
Thank you much, Mayor Given. I've got three people that I would like to add to the boards, and I'd ask the council approve Mr. David Logan be appointed to the Combative Sports Commission for the remainder of the term, ending December 31st, 2013. Also, Mr. Bill Mahood and Mr. Darrell Stobie be appointed to the Combative Sports Commission for three-year terms, ending December 31st, 2015.
Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries and brings us to Economic Development Advisory Committee. Counselor Radburn.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I move that Mr. Michael Brousse, Mr. Wade Green Tree, Ms. Joan Goldhawk, Ms. Ainsley Lamontagne, Mr. A. Sandy McDonald, Mr. Joel Park, Ms. Janet Plante, Ms. Debbie Reed, Mr. M. Turk Taylor be appointed to the Economic Development Advisory Committee for one-year terms, ending December 31st, 2013.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. And there was one more out of business. This is a mayor's recommendation for appointment to the Regional Joint Regional Emergency Management Committee. We need to have an alternate. Counselor Rice.
I move that Counselor Dan Wong be appointed as an alternate council representative to the Joint Regional Emergency Management Committee.
Thanks very much, Counselor Rice. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries, and that handles all of our report business. Thanks very much, and congratulations to everybody who's going to be serving a term of any length on any of the city committees. We certainly appreciate the involvement of our community in volunteering for these positions that help us run our city. That'd take us to committee business and 9.1, the Public Works Committee. Counselor Gustafson.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move that council receive the minutes of the Public Works Committee meeting held November 13th, 2012.
Thanks very much, Counselor Gustafson. Did anyone note any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Seeing nothing, then I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Gustafson.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I'll move that council adopt the 84th Street Functional Study.
Thanks very much, Counselor Gustafson. Any discussion or debate on the motion? I don't know if, maybe we could get a introduction from administration, just an overview? I see Mr. Kyle here. I didn't, I didn't want to have you come all this way, Norman, and not get a chance to speak, so do you want to just give us an overview of the plan?
Yeah, this is, this came out as a result of the Transportation Master Plan update in 2009. Basically, it was to look at all of our arterial roadways. This is the first of four functional studies engineering is undertaking. It looks at the long-term use and requirements for 84th Street from 68th Ave. all the way up to 132nd Ave. It takes it to a full buildout of 90,000, and actually, the work the consultants did takes it beyond that because it takes it to full buildout of the adjacent lands as well. Full buildout of those lands won't occur until after the 90,000 population. It looked at the intersection geometry, locations of intersections, timing of signal lights. All the landowners that came to the open houses and stakeholder meetings were in general agreement. There is one modification to the Crystal Landing and Carriage Lane outline plans that's required as a result of the study. It's shifting the access to those properties that's north of 100th Avenue, further north to provide better intersection geometry. The landowners are on board with these changes, and administration is currently working on amendments to those plans and hope to bring those forward to council shortly.
Great. Thanks very much, Mr. Kyle. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. And that motion carries. Counselor Gustafson, was there anything else that you wanted to highlight in that set of minutes?
Just briefly, I guess we talked about the connecting pathway down to Muscat CP Parks. We requested a little more information on that and 84th Street Functional Study. Thanks, Norman, for that. And Canada Post, we received a letter from Canada Post requiring developers to buy the mailboxes in the new developments around the city, so, and that's all. I'll be happy to entertain any questions.
Any questions for Counselor Gustafson? Seeing none, then we'll move on to 9.2 in the Protective Services Committee. Counselor Wong.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Given. I move that council receive the minutes of the Protective Services Committee meeting held November 20th, 2012.
Thanks, Counsel Wong. Any errors or omissions in that set of minutes? Questions or comments? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Counselor Wong.
I move that council approve the establishment of a Safe Growth Matching Grant and that the grant be administered in accordance with the flow chart and guidelines, and that the Protective Services Committee be the final decision body for the Safe Growth Matching Grant applications, and further that the funding for the first year of the Safe Growth Matching Grant be carried forward from the current 2012 Crime Prevention Budget to the 2013 Crime Prevention Budget. So, to speak to this briefly, Mayor Given, the, the flow chart, first of all, was amended to make Protective Services the decision-making body. The applicant would basically have to undergo a little bit of education in terms of safe growth principles and SEP Ed principles, but would also meet with our protect, or Crime Prevention Cross-Functional Team, who will analyze the application and try to, try to vet it out a little bit and provide recommendations for the Protective Services Committee before the decision's made. The grant would be for a maximum of $2,500, and it would be a matching grant for each project, and there is $50,000 in the Crime Prevention Budget for 2012 that they're going to carry forward to 2013, so we can get that program started right away.
Great. Thanks very much, Counselor Wong. Any discussion or debate on the motion? Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. Thank you. That motion carries. Thanks very much, Counsel Wong. Was there anything else from that set of minutes that you wanted to highlight?
That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you. And that would take us to 9.3. Counselor Radburn and the General Government Services Committee.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I would move council receive the minutes of the General Government Services Committee meeting held November 20th, 2012.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. Any discussion or debate on that set of minutes? This is going to be like one of your last opportunities for a vote here. Seeing none, I'll call for the vote. There you go. You're safe, Counselor Radburn. Any highlights from that set of minutes?
Just a couple of other, we did receive third-quarter unaudited financial statements, and we talked about the Internet Voting Pilot Project that was referred to budget discussions last Friday.
Thanks very much, Counselor Radburn. That is all of our committee business. We had no items of correspondence, and there were no delegations. We have no notices of motions. That takes us to council member reports, and there were a couple of those. Counselor O'Toole, you had two, I think. Do you want to start with the Combative Sports Commission?
Yes, thank you very much, Mayor Given. Today, we had a meeting, and there will be more of an update at the next council meeting. We went over and fine-tuned our last little bit on the bylaws, and I think we've got it all wordsmithed out, and we've got some resolution to some of our ticketing, but that'll be coming up in the next report. But we did come by today, and we granted an event application by a local promoter, Darren Cliff, Excessive Force Fighting Championship Incorporated, and they will be having an event on March 30th, 2013, at the Evergreen Park Tech Center, and looking forward to that. And also, we have another application. His event license is, this gentleman is from Fort St. John, and we, we, it's been approved with some, some conditions attached, I guess is the proper term, and it'll be at the Jackpart, Jackpot Bar and Grill on February 22nd, 2013.
Great. Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Thanks for the update. And you said you had Disabled Transportation Society as well.
Yes, just a short little update here. The DTS has just re-completed a renovation project with their dispatching operating system, so we should be getting a little bit better system and a little bit more ease, so, in contacting and distributing the buses through the operators.
That's great.
So, it's a large undertaking, but well-deserved and well-timed.
Great. Thanks very much, Counselor O'Toole. Counselor Wong, I think you had WAPD Corridor Planning.
Yes, I do, Mayor Given. On Thursday, November 22nd, the WAPD Corridor Planning Society held an open house at the tech center. It allowed members of the public an opportunity to have an overview of the draft plan and provide feedback, and also have a bunch of questions answered. The, the plan that was created is a 134-page plan. It includes suggested zoning and usages for the WAPD corridor area, as well as suggestions for implementation of the plan. Copies of the plan can be obtained at wapdcorridor.ca. It's quite a large document, so we made it available electronically, as opposed to printing off a bunch of copies for everyone. We're hoping to have it adopted by the provincial government somewhere in the new year, after we're able to incorporate all the feedback that people can give. So, we're still taking feedback. So, anyone out there who, who wants a chance to do some light reading over the week, they can download this plan and provide us with some, just some suggestions on how you think we could improve on it. We feel that having the plan adopted is going to allow for, for a better recreational experience for everyone. It'll also allow anyone who wants to develop any kind of opportunity there, whether it's industrial or recreational, to see how their plans would impact other users.
That's great. Thanks very much, Counsel Wong. Thanks for your work with the, the committee. I think that was all of our council member committee reports, and so maybe Counselor Wong, if you want to start roundtable, and we'll go from you to Counselor Gustafson and around.
Sure thing. On Wednesday, November 14th, I was at City Hall for the Annexation Team Meeting, as well as Land Use Bylaw Review. On the evening of November 15th, I attended the Festival of Trees Gala at the Tech Center, and I'd have to say that that was just a fantastic event. The, I heard from the Hospital Foundation that they, they did break records in terms of what the sales were. I don't remember what the actual fundraising total was, though. I know it was in excess of $122,000 that evening alone. November 19th, I was at City Hall for the Policy Review Committee. November 20th, Counselor O'Toole and I attended the Chair Leaders Meeting for the Canadian Paraplegic Association, and we're helping them plan their next event. I think it's going to be really exciting, some of the ideas that, that we have shooting around the table. November 22nd, I attended the Grand Prairie Regional Tourism Association AGM Luncheon. November 23rd was our budget review at City Hall. On Saturday, November 24th, I attended Trenton Perrance Mega Mixer at Center 2000. I know almost everyone from council was there, as well as much of our city administration. Trenton was a city employee. He, he was our manager of strategic something. I don't remember exactly what it was. Strategic services. He was also, when I first met Trenton, he was the, the manager of the Prairie Art Gallery, and I know that he's gone through many roles in his career, careers in Grand Prairie, including manager of the chamber, the museum, the art gallery, and, and a bunch, and as well, he had a bunch of other roles, such as president of the Grand Prairie Rotary Club. Very involved in the community. He even helped raise money and get Center 2000 built. That's why the Mega Mixer was there. So, he was, he was a very inspirational man. I didn't realize all the things he did till I attended the Mega Mixer, and he will be missed. Only a couple more things in my committee meeting. On November 24th, I did attend the city Christmas party, another fantastic event. It's really great that we're able to get out there and mingle with staff, because city has become such a big organization, and when you walk in there, I would say the majority of people I know I've met at one time, but it's really tough to put those names and faces together until you get into an environment like this. Really enjoyed it. November 26th, which was just today, I was at the Combative Sports Commission meeting, and we, we made some really good headway on that bylaw. That's everything.
Thanks very much, Counsel Wong. Counselor Gustafson.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I attended the Land Use Bylaw Review Presentation here at City Hall, and I'm, I would just like to encourage the general public to review that document if they want to change anything or look at anything. It's kind of the last chance they might ever get to change it. I also attended the Airport Commission Master Plan Update, the Festival of Trees out at the Tech Center, and budget deliberations here on Friday at, at City Hall. Thank you, Mayor Given.
Thanks very much, Counselor Gustafson. Counselor Rice.
I attended the Tourism AGM. Congratulations to Counselor Radburn on being re-elected to their board. They did a massive overhaul of their bylaws. I think just a fantastic job to ensure that that organization is even more effective and efficient. So, good job, Counselor Radburn, and again, congratulations. I attended the Festival and Events Workshop put on by Tourism Parks and Recreation and the Grand Prairie Regional Tourism Association. Attended the budget sessions, and I also attended the Mega Mixer for Trenton, and it was, it was really, really heartening to see the crowd there, and what a nice idea. Trenton was the one that initiated mixers for the, when he was manager of the Chamber of Commerce, so I thought it was very fitting. That's what they had.
Thanks very much, Counsel Rice. Counselor Crokin.
Thank you, Mayor Given. I had missed last council. I'll just touch on a few things prior. On October 31st, I attended the United Way Chili Luncheon at the Fire Hall Kickoff. November 6th, I headed the city committee, committees of the whole. On the 7th, the inter-ministerial meeting with the county, Beaver Lodge, Hythe, Wembley, Sexmouth, held at Beaver Lodge's new swimming pool, and great group, and it just goes to show what we all, working together, can, can accomplish. On the 8th, I attended the Blast Bay Mixer at Victoria's Attic. Good job, Alex. On November 11th, I attended the Members' Day Ceremonies at the Canada Games Arena. On the 13th to 15th, I, with fellow Counselor McLean, attended the AMDNC in Edmonton, and it was a real eye-opener that they do have same and similar challenges as us urban, so we're working together. It was a very friendly meeting, and there was an awful lot of ministers. There was 20 there in the hot seat, so they had lots of questions. On the 16th, I was at City Hall here with the mayor and others, the raising of the proclamation and the raising of the Maytee flag here at City Hall. On the 19th, I attended also the Land Use Committee of the Whole. On the 21st, I attended the Canadian Home Builders Association Grand Prairie Members Local Chapter at the Quality Inn. 2013, of course, was the, or on the 23rd, was the 2013 Budget Review. And the 22nd, I missed the line there, I also, on behalf of the mayor and city council, read Proclamation of Addictions Awareness Week at the Salvation Army. Good job, Karen Garpe and her, and her crew. Later in the day, opened tenders. Love me tender. On November 24th, I missed the city party. It was somebody's 65th birthday party bash, so I did have to attend that. And on the 26th, of course, today was Committee of the Whole, and that was everything. Mayor Bill?
Thanks very much, Counsel Holden. Counselor Monroe.
Thanks very much, Mayor Given. On the 14th, I attended the Land Use Bylaw Draft Review, and will echo Counselor Gustafson's comments that please, if you have the opportunity, please get involved in this document. It really is a very important document. On the 15th, I attended the Festival of Trees Gala, and I'd just like to say, you know, there's a ton of volunteers that put on this event, and it's, they do a great job every year, and look forward to many more years of that. As I understand it's, I'm, I'm not sure how much they raised either, but I understand that they're anticipating about a 15% increase over last year's funds that they did raise. On the 23rd, I was present for the Budget Review. On the 24th, I attended Trenton's Mega Mixer, and once again, I think that my fellow counselors have already made plenty of comments about it. It was a very nice event. And then later on that evening, I attended the Journey Loverboy Night Ranger Concert at the Crystal Center, and gotta say, it was quite an enjoyable concert, and from what I could tell, it looked like the Crystal Center was, was cheerful. It looked like a sell-out crowd, so, thank you very much.
Thanks very much, Counsel Monroe. Counselor O'Toole.
Thank you very much, Mayor Given. On Tuesday, the 13th, I attended the DTS meeting, and we made some decisions regarding the purchase of buying the new computerized dispatch system. On the, later that day, I attended the Library Board Meeting, either, later on in the evening. On the, the 14th, I attended the Land Use Bylaw Review, and very interesting, and a lot of hard work has gone into this project by a lot of people. On Thursday, the, the 15th, I was at the, at the airport, and we're looking at the master plan and strategic planning for the future, and we had some consultants there as well. And the next week, we've got, hang on here, come on. The Chair Leaders Meeting that Counselor Wong had mentioned was a good group of people that have got some good ideas for this coming year, and that was an interesting evening we had at the meeting at Points West. And on, let's see, the 22nd, I attended the Tourism General Meeting, and that was a well-attended meeting. And once again, congratulations, Mr. Radburn, for making the committee. And on the 23rd, Friday, I was also at the Budget Deliberation and Budget Review at Council Chambers here. On the 24th, I attended the city Christmas party, and I didn't close the doors this year, but I was home by 10:30, so. It was a very young crowd, and they were doing some Korean dancing and all that good stuff, and just a little bit out of my hand, but very well-attended. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Counsel O'Toole. You mean there's no O'Toole style?
You know, I was doing that in the 70s at Bazanson Hall, and they didn't think it was very good, and I got booed.
Okay, Counsel Radburn.
Thank you. Thank you. November 14th, City Annexation Team Meeting and the Land Use Bylaw Review Session. November 15th, I brought greetings on behalf of the Mayor and Council to the 35th Annual Farm Women's Conference. At noon, I attended the Bullying Awareness Proclamation, and I would just like to recognize the Grand Prairie Rugby Club for their work and advocacy and helping with that project. And I also went to the Airport Commission Planning Session. November 19th, Council Committee of the Whole read the audio/video upgrades here in Council Chambers. And then I went to the Economic Development Advisory Committee meeting that night, where we did, we talked, we reviewed the amended industrial traction strategy that will be coming to council here in the next month or so, and we began work on putting the, I guess, the structure to a tourism strategy committee. We'll work on that, and we had an economic development update by Mr. Glavine. November 22nd, was the special and Grand Prairie Regional Tourism Annual Meetings, and then I attended the Joint Regional Emergency Management Committee Meeting, where the agenda was, we looked at the Emergency Management Aid Agreement and made a couple revisions that will be coming to council shortly. And then we began looking at a draft Emergency Management Partnership Agreement and a draft Regional Emergency Management Bylaw that will be coming to council, I would say, in February or so of 2013. Then I went to the National Addictions Awareness Week Supper, hosted by Crime Prevention. I broke bread with Counselor Crokin again. broke bread with Counselor Crokin again. Just wanted kudos to the Crime Prevention Staff for hosting that event at the Salvation Army. And then I attended the WAPD Corridors Planning Group Open House that evening, and again, I just want to thank Counselor Wong for his work on that committee, and they've done a good job, great job, actually. I think that we should be proud of that leadership, and I think it'll bode well for our future. Twenty-third was the budget review of council, council's budget review session, and the twenty-fourth, I also went to the Mega Mixer to honor Trenton Perrance, many insignificant contributions to our community. And that evening, I did also attend the city Christmas party, and thank you to the planners and organizers for, I guess, having a venue and a program, and a meal, and a dance that everyone enjoyed. Thank you.
Thanks very much, Counselor Redburn. Counselor McLean.
Thank you, Mayor Given, as well. Counselor Crokin, we were in Edmonton in the last council meeting, so I'll name off a couple that I got here. November first, had my quarterly meeting with Greg, and look forward to them every time. On November fifth, I was at the launch of the Citizen Engagement Program. November sixth, the council committee as a whole meeting. November seventh, we had our inter-municipal meeting at Beaver Lodge. Of course, Beaver Lodge council was there, Wembley, Sexsmith, Height, County of Grand Prairie, and the City of Grand Prairie. I think it was the first time the city's been at this event in about seven years, so it was way overdue. November eighth, I had my monthly meeting at Community Futures. November twelfth, thirteenth, fourteenth, fifteenth, I was in Edmonton with Counselor John Crokin at the AAMDC convention, and just hearing all the different issues out there within the county, and they have a lot of roads and bridges and everything on behalf of that. Heard a lot of the leaders speak. Daniel Smith, she's actually speaking quite good now, a lot better. Also, I was very proud to accept the award on behalf of the city, the Word of Excellence for Municipal Government Day. Very proud, there's very few cities, there's none, I think, actually, in America, has that have Municipal Government Day, where our planners of our city, our firemen, bylaw officers, RCP inspectors, road crews, go on and on and on to show the community what actually they do in our community, and get the community involved. So I think that's one day that's been eleven or twelve years, that's been tremendous, and hopefully will carry on for a long time. November sixteenth, I was also at the Métis Flag Raising Event for Louis Real Day. November sixteenth was for two tenor opening. One was in the northwest, for the Northwest Round Network and Traffic Study, and there were some pretty thick tenors there. There was probably, I don't know, four or six. Norman's going to have a job going through a few of them next few weeks, because there, there's a little bit of work there involved. And the other one, which I was, I got to see some pictures, was the supply installed exterior signs of the East Link Center, and on the west side and the south side. As you know, now you go by, it's just, there you go, but where's the name? So, when that gets put up, hopefully in the next two or three months, it's going to look really good and really sharp, and people are going to be saying East Link Center. And November twenty-third, I was also here for budget review. That's all.
Thanks very much, Counselor McLean. So, I'll try to be brief, since council's covered many of the appointments and meetings. On the fourteenth, I was also in attendance to the land use bylaw review, and later that evening, I had the privilege of joining at the Salvation Army to the kickoff of their annual kettle campaign. It was my honor to make the first donation. On the fifteenth, I had a meeting with the President of Karna, and Karna is the College and Association of Registered Nurses of Alberta. Diane Dyer was in town. I was actually spent the entire week in Grand Prairie, which was great to see, and it was good to talk about opportunities for municipalities to learn more about the role that nurses, nurses play in the health of our communities. Later that day, I was, of course, at the East Link Center to make the Bullying Awareness Proclamation, and thanks very much to those council members that attended. I was also at the airport master planning meeting, and that evening, at the Festival of Trees. On the sixteenth, I attended at the Aqua Terra Head Office to participate in the announcement of ten million dollars of federal funding for the wastewater treatment plant project. I certainly want to thank MP Chris Workington for his work on that file, and also want to highlight the importance of the Build Canada program, which this is sort of one of the last amounts of funding that will really come from that program, and certainly was an important opportunity to highlight how the federal government can play a significant role in improving the financial health and health of our communities by investing in infrastructure. So, hopefully they'll choose to renew that program soon. Later that day, I was back here at City Hall for the Métis flag raising. It was an honor to be able to raise the Métis flag above City Hall. I know it was certainly appreciated by the members of our Métis local, and it was an honor to be able to recognize Louis Real Day. On the seventeenth, I was at the East Link Center in the morning to do the opening tip-off for an Alberta wheelchair basketball tournament. It was great to see players from across the province in our city. There was one player who had competed in London this summer at the Paralympics. You could tell that she was significantly better than just about anybody else on the court. It was pretty impressive, but great to see those athletes making their way to Grand Prairie and getting the most out of our award-winning accessible facility. And later that morning, I was over at the Leisure Center to participate in a ribbon cutting for the new soccer pitch. If you haven't been by to see the Leisure Center soccer pitch, you'll be impressed. It's a fantastic facility. One of the things that I noticed first off is that they had curtains which are down the, down the pitch, which I don't believe that they had before, so they can really divide the pitch into three surfaces, which is great for those little, little, little tykes playing soccer. They had, I think, three games going on at once and a couple of shifts, and so I, you know, I couldn't count how many little kids there were running around, making use of that facility, so I'd encourage council to go by and pop their head in and see how great that looks. On the twentieth, I joined the city manager Greg at the Service Center, the City Service Center, to recognize the work of our safety codes staff. They had a significant project that they completed over the course of the last ten months, and certainly wanted to recognize their efforts in, in doing that. On the twenty-first, I was here at City Hall for another flag raising. We raised the AMA flag above City Hall to recognize the seventy-fifth anniversary of the AMA School Patrol Program. We were joined by some children from Hillside School. Some controllers were able to come over to City Hall and help join me in raising the flag. They actually did all the work. I just stood there and watched the flag go up, but I think they really enjoyed it. On the twenty-second, I was also at the Tourism AGM, and of course, on the twenty-fourth, I was at Trenton's Mega Mixer. I believe that's all the items that I have to report, and that's all the business for our council meeting. Thank you very much.